Good evening, I'm Art Whitman, Vice Chair of the Shaffsberry Slug Board and like to call this meeting to order at 6:30 April 16th, 2018. First order of business is conflict of vendors, does anybody see anything of conflict on the agenda?
No.
Approval of minutes?
We have no minutes.
We have no minutes for this one? Skip right to warrants. We have the one right on top, this is our pay for the year. Like that, stipends for us and for the school board, right?
Fire Department.
And Fire Department, okay then. Warrant number 34, an amount of $3,200.
So moved.
Check it.
Moved by Tony, second by Ken. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried 400. Do I write that on here?
Uh, no, you just sign it.
Okay, just sign it, okay. This is for the marriage licenses that have to be paid to the state of Vermont.
Yes.
For a sum of $200.
So moved.
Check it.
Moved by Tony, second by Ken. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve 400. For the sum of $19,700.
So moved.
Check it.
Moved by Tony, second by Ken. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried 400. And the last one is check warrant number 36. For a total of $75,425.72.
So moved.
Taken by, uh, moved by Tony.
Check it.
Seconded by Ken. Allied Rescue Systems of Northeast.
That's for service and repairs, leave the rescue equipment on the various fire trucks.
BCBS of Vermont, for $6,000. Bennington County Sheriff's, $2,000. Quarter raft of them for deliveries, $1,800. $2,800, $6,500, all for deliveries, repair on trucks. Joe Vatican, $1,000, that's the, that's his stipend? Is that in, that's in this and not in stipend?
That's in the form of, uh...
This one?
Yeah, that's the reimbursed job or something else.
Okay, it says stipend.
That one right behind you.
$13,000 to Peoples United, that must be a loan payment?
Yes, that's the loan payment for one of our houses on North Move.
Okay. And $1,600 to Weenie Daily. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Guess I forgot to announce that there's a slight change in the agenda. Jim Henderson is here from BCIC, who's gonna be talking about the permit that we have to get to put in ditches and culverts and that sort of stuff, and so he'll be talking just before the road report, and then you'll probably stay for that also.
Just to clarify for a second, Joe Vatican's, uh, that was the reimbursed, Joe, he had paid upfront a series of small repairs to the firehouse, so it's to reimburse him for payments to Sherwin-Williams, to additional construction.
Yeah, it just...
Yeah, it just might need well, uh...
Yep, okay then. Any announcements? I did get a card about the Household Waste Day. What's, what's the day of that?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't know. Sorry, I don't have it off the top of my head. Do you know Jim?
Jim is sitting down.
I'll tell you a name just a moment.
Okay.
Although I'll have to blank the screen out.
Any other announcements? Anybody got any other announcements?
I'll bring that up at the end of the meeting.
Public comments? I don't see any. Everybody here from the public? Go right onto the Treasurers Report.
Okay.
Melanie?
Hello.
Hello.
Um, just wanna bring up the cash flow. I'll zip through this real fast because there are a couple of other things I wanted to talk to, talk about, and, um, you know, mid-month cash flows are not terribly informative, but, um, you see we got another chunk of delinquent taxes, that's still coming in, it's, it's about where we expect to be this time of year. You see that state per parcel, that's the, uh, the payment we get for this, from the state for, um, is that to put money in for reassessment or something?
Yeah, it goes into the Listers Fund for reappraisal.
Yeah, so, um, so you can see if you, you look down, it went right in and right out again, that, that's actually is, uh, goes to the reserve account, so if you go, look down at expenditures, you'll see that same money went back out again. Nothing else particularly interesting going on. We got our highway, our quarterly highway state aid. If you go down a little bit more, you can see our cash position with our other funds, the, um, the garage bond and the Listers reappraisal CD. So, uh, that's about it for cash in and out for this half of the month. The, according to the agenda, we were also gonna talk about the Sullivan Powers proposal. I sent around an email saying that I thought that they had done a lot of extra work for us to secure our long-term relationship, and I'm not, and, and the increase that they're proposing is actually less than inflation, so I am inclined to recommend that we not nickel-and-dime on, on this. And Dave actually pulled the invoices, and they wrote off over $27,000 in excess over contract in, in the first couple of years, just because there is that learning curve as to, um, figure out where and how we do our, our accounting. So, anyway, I would, I would suggest that we accept their proposal, not my decision, but my recommendation would be that we accept their proposal as, um, as they laid it out and not, um, not quibble about the increase year-over-year.
Okay.
That will require a motion from the board.
Was there anything else?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm, no, no.
Okay, I, I just had a question, what's the difference between the Listers Reserve Fund and this, and the, that...
The CD, yeah, I think we just have, we wanna make more, more money on it, and we're not gonna be using it in the short term, so it just gets a higher interest rate in the CD.
Okay, and so the money that, for parcel thing came from the state, that all goes to the same thing?
That went into the reserve account, I mean, that's something we might wanna talk about at some point, there's like a hundred something thousand in the reserve account in addition to the, to the CD, if we wanna put more of the money into the CD, I think we could do that, I don't know what the schedule is for, for using that money. The CD is a, is a year maturity.
Now that we, we are hiring a professional appraiser, is there still gonna be a time when we gotta go through the whole town and do a complete reappraisal, or is it done on a...
That has not happened in my tenure, I know Dave probably doesn't...
There will come a time when we come out of balance, if we come out of balance, that the state will mandate that we do.
Okay.
Right now, uh, from the last time I talked, when Chris was here, uh, who was the assessor before the last assessor, we were well within bounds, but that's the point of building this up, so that when you do have to do it, you can just hire the company to come in and do it quickly, but it's not, nothing imminent, but the reason you get this money from the state is so that you can invest it in, in having a reappraisal done when needed, but it's decided by the state.
Are we allowed to pay the assessor out of that, or is that a separate line item of our budget?
I will talk with the Listers about that and find out, I, I haven't had that asked before, so I don't know.
But the idea of a professional appraiser is that we won't, it takes longer to become out of balance, is that not right?
Uh, yeah, part of it is to make sure you're keeping up to date, that your numbers are as best as you can get, and then the market influence will be the real driving thing to take you out of balance.
And that's, that is coming up a little bit.
Yeah.
But it's, you know, I mean, I haven't even thought about that before, but we do have that $120,000 sitting there that's not, it's earning almost no interest at all in this account.
We have used money from that fund a couple of years ago to do something with the Listers, I can't remember off the top of my head what it was, but we'll look into it.
Well, there's Listers Education in it, there's, which I know we've used money for, it's a separate...
Yeah, no, this was something, this was something we did, we'll have to look into.
If the state doesn't mind us putting it into a CD...
Let's give it a second.
Yeah.
It's still living, right? I mean, can you...
The only question is whether we would need to pull it out before, and you know, and pay a penalty, but...
Normally you get such a lead time when you have to do a reevaluate.
Yeah, and I think we aren't allowed to put, like, the, like, when we get money, uh, bond money, we aren't allowed to reimburse that money, but this, this is something different.
This is different, yeah.
It's actually really good timing to be asking this question, because that CD is coming due in the next couple of weeks, so if we wanted to, uh, put more money into it, why not make a couple?
Okay.
Yeah, let me see what he says we're talking about.
Okay, uh, let's go to your suggestion of, I guess I would entertain a motion that we accept the contract, is it just for one year, Melanie?
Three, three years.
Oh, it's a three-year contract, but it's, it's also stepped up?
Yeah, it's stepped up every year.
Every year, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry.
Thank you, and then I have one other thing I want to talk about. There, a bunch of the treasurers were all talking about how much they charge people to print tax bills, and a lot of towns charge for that, I, we don't, but, but it led to a discussion of what they make available online, and there's some towns that have a searchable spreadsheet that has all the information that income tax preparers need to fill out the income tax portion of, from, based on the property tax bills. And I have created that, it took some doing actually, but I created that spreadsheet, and it, we could put it online, it would save a lot of people a lot of trouble this time of year, when they're, um, having to get me, when I'm in the office to fax or email them their tax bills for that, the little box that has the, the house site value. I, I am inclined to put that online, I don't see, it's all public...
So I was gonna say, it's not a privacy thing?
There's none of the, none of the private information would be part of this, that's all the part that's related to income is, would not be on here, but the rest of it is public information, and it would be basically just accessed by income tax preparers and the people whose information, who didn't save their tax bills, basically. So, a lot of towns do it, I think it would be helpful, um, it exists, we could easily put it online.
So there, the password would, there would be a password that tax preparers would produce?
I don't even think it would be...
Don't you think it's password protected?
No, no, it's, I, that was not mentioned by any of the other, they said that they'd get nothing but thanks, from the income tax preparers, who often work not my hours, they work at night, you know, so, and they want it when they want it.
Yeah, okay.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I think we do. For something like that, I would say we need a motion.
So, I'll make a motion to put it online.
Melanie's spreadsheet online?
All right.
Can we, what exactly do you wanna call that spreadsheet, just for the motion?
Uh... Uh... Publicity tax.
House, a house site value spreadsheet for income tax preparers?
You're getting all that?
Yeah, right.
I said it, uh, tax, tax bill information, uh, online.
On the website.
Yeah, on the website.
Have a motion by Tony, a second by Ken.
Yep.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried 400.
Okay, and that's all I've got.
Okay.
Any others?
Jim Henderson, what's your title with BCRC?
I'm the manager of our environmental program, and, um, since the passage of the Clean Water Act two years ago, a lot of my time is now spent working on, uh, the Clean Water Initiative and water quality.
Absolutely.
And, uh, and that's, that's the topic of tonight, is, uh, is water quality. So, um, last fall, with, uh, the support of Dave and Steve Washburn, um, and a letter of support from Shelley Styles, uh, coming from the Bennington County Conservation District, we, uh, applied for and we successfully received a grant from the Ecosystem Restoration Program, uh, to develop a stormwater master plan for the town of Shaffsberry. This will be, um, the third stormwater master plan that I've managed. I showed Dave a copy of one of the previous towns that had one done, and, um, and he was quite impressed, as anybody would be. I apologize, I meant to bring a copy of one to pass around, um, and I left it on my desk. So we, we received a grant for $21,000 plus. There is a 11% match that the town has to come up with, and that can be done in cash, time, or equipment. So we'll track the time that Shelley and Dave and Steve put in on this, as well as the use of the trucks, and, um, so we, uh, I developed a request for proposals that I sent out to three firms that work in this type of, uh, role, and, um, we got three back. Shelley, Dave, and I reviewed the three proposals that we received, and we met last week, and, um, we chose the firm of Envir, uh, Fixed Gerald Environmental. And, um, two of those proposals were, uh, were both really high-quality proposals, well-done. The products that they were, um, suggesting, uh, that they would produce were all, um, right what we were looking for. And there were, there was a difference of a few hundred dollars. Shelley, uh, made the, the comment, um, which I completely endorsed, and Dave did too, that, um, one of the, the firm that was a little bit cheaper, um, was one that we had never worked with, and Shelley's very familiar with Fixed Gerald Environmental as well, 'cause she's worked on a couple of other grants with them. And, um, and I think, to quote her, she said, "How much is a good product and good work relationship and experience worth?" It's worth a couple hundred dollars, and I completely agree. And, uh, and Dave, Dave said, "Well, I'm gonna go along with you guys, because you've both worked with this firm, and if you have, um, you know, a really good endorsement, then yeah." Well, he agreed. I've informed all the, all of the firms, and, um, the two who didn't get it, it's exactly what I told them, what I'm telling you, and, um, and they understood. They said, "Yeah," they agreed, they know the firm, and they said, "Yes, they do a great product." So, we will, um, I will develop a contract with Fixed Gerald Environmental, and, basically, here's what the project is. They will do a survey of the entire municipal road system. They will start off with a, um, with a, uh, a field visit with Steve, where they will ask him, "Show us your problematic areas, the, the areas that you're always going back to, to fix, where if there's a high, um, rain event, where do you have to go to?" And so he will, he will hone them in on what he considers the problem areas, then they will come back and they'll, they'll spend three or four days in the field, um, with, with mapping, uh, equipment and surveying equipment, and they will come up with a list of at least, generally, in the other three experiences, over 30 problem areas. And, um, what they're looking for specifically are, um, are erosion situations that are impairing the water, um, or just continual high-maintenance problem areas. It doesn't always have to be, in, in this specific case, it does not have to be specifically addressing a water quality issue, it could just be that the road is a problem here because of X, Y, Z. So of that, of that list of problem areas, we will convene with them, myself, Steve, Dave, and we will pick out of that, um, list the five, what we consider to be the five top priorities. They will then go and do additional site visits on those five top priorities, they will develop, um, a conceptual plan on how to address them, and, uh, costs which, which would, um, you know, to fix this problem. And those are almost ready-to-go applications for, for grants. We've been very successful getting grants with these stormwater master plans. Town of Rupert, that was the first one we did, they've gotten five grants already out of their stormwater master plan that was adopted in 2015. Sandgate and Sunderland, we finished, uh, the, the plan was in final draft in December, and the, uh, this year's round of Better Road applications was about at the same time. So, um, we took the two top priorities from each town and submitted them, all four of them were granted. And, um, I don't recall, you know, what the amounts were on the grants, but some of these were fairly big projects, um, that mostly what we're talking about are culvert replacements, ditching, um, and that, you know, those sort of stormwater-related issues. So, um, I'm here to tell you that, uh, that we're, um, that we're initiating this, uh, project, um, and, uh, to seek any input that you might have, um, and, uh, and to, um, listen to your, uh, you know, you know, if you have any comments or thoughts about this before we start off. We are yet to, um, enter into a contract with the firm, I just, uh, informed them all last week, um, so, if you have any comments or thoughts, I'm, I'm happy to hear them and to bring them back to, um, to either, you know, Dave and Shelley, or the consultants themselves. The consultants will come and meet with you prior to them, you know, starting off, probably the day before that they meet out with, um, with Steve. We'll probably try to schedule it so that they can come meet with you, and then we'll start the next day or something like that. I've become, uh, I've got a great work relationship with them, and, uh, frankly, I've become good friends with, uh, the three individuals who work for this firm. In the last two projects that they worked for, they're, they live up in Colchester, so that's a good two-hour ride. When they do field work, they stay at my house, so they're not, you know, charging travel, they're not charging hotel room, um, they're very cognizant of their costs, and, um, they do a really spectacular job. And I am sorry that I wasn't able to show you and pass it around, 'cause I know you'd be impressed. So, if you have any questions or comments...
Uh, if Steve says, "I've got 15 places that are a problem," and then they, we settle on five, what about the other 10? Does anybody ever go back to them, and does that cost us extra money, or do we, for the $20,000, $21,000, do we just get five?
You would get, you would get the five, um, well, the, the report will, will have all of the problem areas listed.
Okay.
Um, and then, uh, and they rate them, high, medium, and low, depending on, um, they have a criteria list that they, or matrix that they apply, um, to rank each project. And, um, the idea is, if we apply for two, say we, like Sunderland and Sandgate did, we take the first top two, then that would mean that we'd wanna bring two more into, into, um, you know, the queue.
Mm-hmm.
And as an, it would actually be an update to that plan, um, that would be something that you would, uh, pay for them to come back and do.
Again, okay, all right.
It also provides the roadmap we've been talking about for a while, of how to prioritize the many things that need to be done, because this would be a fairly thorough evaluation of, of the erosion qualities of the different parts of the roads, the culvert needs and things like that, a part of the culvert inventory is part of this. But like currently, we have, I think, five active Better Roads Grants now, addressing different areas, I think about seven or eight areas out of those five. This will give us an opportunity to apply for the big two that they identify, gives us a lot of, uh, backup to go for the next one. Remember a few years ago, we hired an engineering firm for a Category A grant to prevent, provide a study, so we could apply for a Category B grant, the fixed upper, upper Shaffsberry Hollow that we'll be doing this year. So this gives us that amount of work for five of the priority jobs to go forward as we can get funding. It also doesn't mean that if three really looks like it needs to get done, and we've only gotten grants for A and B, or number one and two, we can go ahead with that ourselves. Uh, but it gives, it prioritizes things, it shows us where, according to the metrics they use, what really needs to get done and when, so I think it's very helpful.
And, and the grants, when, when you go for a grant, uh, is it assumed that the road crew does some of the work, or that's all part of the grant, how does that work?
Yeah, it's the match.
That's the match.
It's the matching kind, and like, like Tinkham, which we'll be talking about jointly in a minute, which is the grant and aid that we got, uh, it's a lot of money, but our, our match is coming from our trucks, which we charge for the trucks, we charge for the labor, and that's how our match is done. But to do like Tinkham Road, and when we get to West Mountain and several others we have, it's giving us the money from the materials and the time to do this stuff. And Jim and I have already talked about, in the grant and aid, specifically that grant, we may be able to expand further than Tinkham Road and take it to another area, because gravel isn't part of this grant, but, you know, we're, we're putting in culverts, fabric, we've already taken down a substantial number of trees on, on Tinkham Road, and there's a few more to go and clean up, ditching the whole thing, so...
Okay.
Uh, but we match with, it's, it's like with this grant, it'll be my time and Shelley's time, and Steve's time, and Ron, and Dave, and whoever else winds up going out with the, the person as we check out the things. It doesn't preclude us from hiring a sub to do it, but we still have to figure out a way in cash to make up the match, or, or whatever, how we go about doing it.
The, the last two, uh, stormwater management plans that we did, and one in Sandgate and one in Sunderland, uh, we didn't have a problem making a match.
Yep, okay.
If you, if you're, if you're okay with the stormwater management plan, there's another grant that, uh, that Dave applied for through, uh, the Better Road Program, to do a road erosion inventory... Um, to do a road erosion inventory. And that is the first requirement of the Municipal Road General Permit that you had, uh, referred to earlier in the night before the meeting. So that's an eight thousand dollar grant, right, Dave? And, um, generally, uh, when towns apply for those grants, they, they write in the grant application that the Regional Planning Commission will do, uh, the inventory. In this case, and also in the case in the town of Arlington, because we have the stormwater management plan going on and we have this other road erosion inventory, it's very similar. Dave and I talked about, it would make much more logical sense, as opposed to paying me to do it. Have the same firm do the road erosion inventory and they can be doing two projects at the same time concurrently.
They're qualified to do it.
Oh, absolutely, they're qualified to do this. Um, actually, they, um, they worked with Department of Environmental Conservation to build some of the protocols.
Yep, okay.
Um, so the only problem that Dave thought of was, uh, that with this particular grant, if the regional commission wasn't going to do it, if you were going to hire someone else, that you might have to go out for bid. So the idea is, and I've talked to Jim Sullivan about this. Will still be the per, uh... The grant would still come to the Regional Planning Commission, but we will self-contract to have Fitzgerald Environmental do the work. Because we don't have to go out for a bid at that level. Um, and Jim Sullivan also said, uh, that even if it was at a level that in our procurement policy says you need to go out and get three competitive bids. We would be able to argue that this is extenuating circumstances, that we have a firm driving on all these roads and it is only making logical sense to have them do the work as well. So he's fine and okay if that were to be the case. Um, I've talked to them today about this idea and they said, "Great, we, we would certainly do that." Um, it does only make logical sense to do both projects at the same time.
Yeah, it's, it's, it really, to me, I could, I could see no logic in, in winding up with two companies staring at the same stretch of road, coming up with two separate reports. It's one of these situations where, uh, you know, it's almost like the, the main contractor, Fitzgerald, through them, it only makes sense to just have, like in other agreements we have. Agreement is with BRCRC, they hire the subcontractors, so it just makes more sense to have one person there. They're already there.
If you had two that approve, one to me at one time.
It's also gonna magnify what, what your product is because they're having more time because they have more funds to look at the roads and, you know, evaluate things, so...
So we already approved this first one, I think, didn't we?
Yeah, these are, these are all approved, um...
And you don't need a vote from us, that's all I'm...
No, we, no, we don't need a vote because we, we can just submit these.
Part, part of the work plan that, uh, that we submitted in our grant application has been approved is, uh, to have a, a public informational meeting right now. That's happening.
Okay.
Um, so they, they pretty much have a template of, this is how we would like this project to go. Um, once you have, uh, signed the, you know, got, signed the agreement with the state, which, which we have done. Um, the grant came to us. Um, so the agreement is between the state of Vermont and BRCRC. We're passing the money through to the consultant.
Yep.
Um, but, uh, it was, you know, form a steering committee, put out an RFP, choose your consultant, have a steering committee meeting. Then the consultant comes in and they do, um, basically a kickoff meeting, introduce, tell you about, uh, their ideas, what, how they work. Have a site visit with Steve. Then it's all field work for a few days. Then they start doing their reporting.
Yep, okay.
And their design work. They subcontract with a, um, uh, with an engineer, uh, to do their conceptual designs. So if they get in over their head, for instance, uh, there was, um, a project in, in Sandgate where there's a bank of a road that's slopping off. Uh, and they, they pulled in their, uh, engineer to design that one for them.
Okay. Comments, concerns? Good to go, thank you very much.
You're, you're very welcome, um, and I, I would just say, it's been a real pleasurable experience working with these guys. And, um, and the product has, you know, showed, showed their value in the amount of grant money that we've gotten through these projects. Do you want to talk about Tinkham Road a little bit more?
Yeah, if we can just go onto the roads because Jim's involved with this and a different grant we have, the Granton Aid program from the state. We were funded, uh, approximately twenty-one thousand dollars for this. Uh, and we'll use it and then move on to next year and hopefully get it again because they understand the legislature is refunding it at a higher rate for this year.
That's true.
So, uh, Tinkham Road was a road, Jim, myself, and Steve drove around for a while looking for a place to, to work on this because that's a sit, fit certain criteria. So we chose, uh, four sections of Tinkham Road. Uh, myself and the crew decided we're doing it from top to bottom, we're heading on the other sections. The other section didn't match the criteria, but you have to do the whole thing. Uh, there's a lot of ditching, uh, we're gonna put in some culverts across the road at various locations, uh, there was talking...
And a driveway culvert.
A driveway culvert, two, uh, or two now because we discovered another driveway up there. So there might be two, uh, we're not sure if that driver's, was supposed to have had a culvert put in, but we'll, we'll find out. Uh, but because we're doing the work, we'll put the culverts in and just to make the water run better down the side of the road and make it fit into the program so that... Because it's one of the hydrologically connected sections, which is part of this entire thing. And out of our seventy miles, I think fifty are considered hydrologically connected, so, uh, this is the first shot at it. Uh, we have about four hundred and eighty feet of fabric we're gonna put down. One of the hardships of this grant is it doesn't include any gravel, so we'll, we'll buy the gravel to go on top of that. But, uh, which led me to ask him about, you know, as I budget this thing out, I'm not sure I can spend all that money here. So what we're gonna do is when we finish this, which will be by the end of May, first week in June, uh, we'll take the remainder and hopefully go somewhere else and do some work somewhere else. Because when you, when you look at our hydrologic map, uh, we have more than our share of places where we can put this together. Uh, and next year, if we successfully complete this, when we successfully complete this, hopefully we'll, we'll get a summer grant. Because, uh, uh, even though it's not the gravel, which many of our roads need, it will put in culverts, will get, allow us a lot of time to do ditching, take down a lot of trees along the edge there.
How about French drain?
We'll put in whatever drains required, I mean, you know, there, we're not putting in French drains, but, uh...
No, but the ones that we put in last year were really good.
Oh, yeah, they did, they did, but...
They are noticeable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, we're actually talking about several of those because, um, I forget what, what Better Roads grant that is. But we're talking about those for West Mountain Road by the apple orchid there where it always gets wet. Uh, we have several other projects that are already funded that we have to get to by the end of fiscal nineteen, so... Uh, and that's, that's going back, taking one step backwards to what Jim was talking about, this study thing. Once we have this and I can start pulling those out and applying for more Better Roads grants, you know, that's what they want to see, that the due diligence has been done.
That you've done the whole break.
And, you know, then, then we can get the money to get it completed. And I think if you want to talk about improving the roads, that's probably the most effective way of going about it is, you know, they'll identify our bad sections and we'll just start knocking them off. I mean, when we get through what we have in the pipeline already, it's gonna make a difference.
I have my fingers crossed, but right now, our batting record is a hundred percent for grants that we have submitted for, um, based on stormwater master plans.
Yep, okay.
Um, so when Dave called me a week or two ago and he said, "Jim, I don't know if we're gonna be able to expend all the money on Tinkham Road." He asked if we could add another project on and I confirmed that yes, we can. So, um, the only, the only catch might be is that, that all the work has to be done by June thirtieth.
Of this year.
Yes. So, you know, um, if they're, if they finish up Tinkham Road, uh, first week of May, it only leaves three weeks for them to do another project. But, you know, it might be one culvert that they could do in a day.
Yeah, it's, it's then, unfortunately, this, this grant got off to a slow start last fall. So that by the time we were funded, you know, as you might remember, we had a, a few, um, backlogs last year. Uh, there was no way we were starting, but, uh, we feel we can do this two to, two to three weeks maximum. And then move on to the next thing in June. Uh, you know, we, we've cut back some of it because we were talking about chipping out a lot of ledge, uh, to make the road. But, you know, as I was standing there and, and a certain delivery company's van went by me at about fifty miles an hour. It was like, you know, taking the bend out of this is not, it's not gonna improve this at all. You know, having a little bend there and putting the culvert, when the bend goes, like, you put the culvert here to bring it over to the field and then just picking it up on the other side might be a much safer thing. Because like many of our roads, one of the problems is people really like to move on them, so, uh...
Get it too straight.
Well, that's the thing, you know, if you make the road too good, then the speed is really going through the roof, so... A little, little bend in the road, you see, that guy surprised me and I've seen a lot of speeders in my day, but...
When Dave, when Dave referred to the grant getting off on a slow start, it had absolutely nothing to do with anybody except for the state of Vermont. Frankly, what happened was legislature, in the last moment of last legislative session, came up with this grant program. Um, it's all, all about the Clean Water Initiative, um, and the Clean Water Act. And, um, it was the last week of June that I got notified that there is this new grant program. And, um, you gotta go out and, uh, get a letter of support or a letter of commitment, really is what it was, from each of your select boards. And we need this back by July seventh. So you throw, you throw our major holiday of the year in there as well and, um...
And a weekend, yeah.
Yeah, and a weekend.
But don't hurry.
Yeah.
So, so it was, it was a challenge and, um, and frankly, I, I think we did pretty well that almost all of the towns signed on to this. Two towns didn't, only because the select board had just met the night or two before. So they're, "Sorry, Jim, we're not gonna meet until, um, after this is due." Um, so we know this is coming this time and, um, I think all the towns have had very positive, uh, results. I haven't heard a single criticism of this program. And a good part, a good reason for that, I believe, is because they've really, um, it's kind of an expedited grant program. Where you don't have to go through an application and show, you know, here's our design. Basically, they, they have very specific rules. It has to be on one of these hydrologically connected road segments, which, which means the roads within a hundred meters of a surface water. And it has to be, you must be addressing the problem with one of several best management practices. And those would, that would be, um, upgrading a culvert to at least an eighteen-inch culvert, if it's a cross culvert. Uh, stone line ditching on any slope over eight percent. Grass or swale, uh, under eight percent. Um, so they're very specific. If your project is going, going to do, all I had to do was approve it. Um, it was up, it was up to us to say, "Yes, this is doing what the program expects and here's your pro, uh, pre-pitches." And then I have to submit, uh, post-construction pictures, done. So it, it gets the money spent really fast without any red tape and hardly any administrative costs. That's what I think most of the towns felt was very positive about this. And here's how I approached it too. I went to every road foreman and I said, "Here's your..." I brought a map. I said, "Here's the map of where your hydrologically connected roads are. Show me spots on here that you're gonna be working on this summer. Let's pick a project that you're already gonna be doing."
Yep.
And it's gravy, we'll pay for that.
Sure.
And, uh, so that's, that, most of the projects that we did, with the exception of Shaftesbury, frankly, because...
We're more innovative.
The, the, the one, the one thing that they would not pay for was, um, the re-establishment of a crown. And that's one of the best management practices is to have a good crown for proper drainage. They did not want this grant to be, uh, thought of as the gravel grant. Where every town went out and bought their year's supply of gravel using this money. So right off, from the very get-go, they said, "We will not reimburse a town for gravel." Unless it has to do with putting in a culvert and you need some, uh, the gravel to finish the job. So when we were driving around...
We drove around a lot.
A lot of the, almost all of the, the issues that we encountered, I would say ninety-eight percent of them was due to a lack of crown. So, you know, you'd have, um, you'd have the road as flat as a pancake with the, um, with, with the shoulder three or four inches higher. Where's that water gonna go? It's not going off the road. It's not gonna go anywhere until enough gravel gets in to build the crown. That was the premier issue in the town of Shaftesbury. Not just Shaftesbury, other towns too, but it was, it was mostly the issue here. Um, because frankly, you're, you've got a good road crew, they know their business and they're doing good work. Um, but gravel costs money and, and it's a constant. So my suggestion to you would be, um, in the future, you know, you gotta budget for more gravel. Of course, uh, with the Municipal Road General Permit, a lot of the hydrologically connected roads will not pass because of the lack of crown.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this Municipal Road General Permit, it starts this, this July. Um, the first, as I said, the first step a town has to do is a road erosion inventory. Then you have, um, a five-year period to start working on, um, the top priorities. They, they will ask you to identify the top priorities. This is going hand-in-hand with the project that we're just talking about.
Yep, okay.
So the timing is perfect.
Yep.
Um, and, and then, then there's a longer window of time, I, I don't remember the specific, uh, year, but it's twenty-five years out, or s, around there. That you will have to bring all of your road segments up to the state standard. So that every road that has a, a slope over five percent needs a stone line ditch. Et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
And the good thing about this is that the, the Granton Aid is based on, on your mileage. And, uh, so that allows us to take that money, uh, and spend it on things like culverts, expanding stone line ditches, which are expensive. Uh, but we can pay for it with that money and put more money in gravel. And it'll take a while, um, to restore a crown to a lot of the roads, but I think we're making some progress on it, but it's...
I've seen an improvement.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fifty, it's fifty miles of gravel, so it's, it's gonna take a while, you know, but I think we're...
We've added gravel to our budget anyway.
Yeah, every year we've been adding up, we've been trying to get more in every year.
Yeah.
I mean, right now, we're a little, we're getting close to double where it was five or six years ago. You know, with the Class B road grant too, which is all for road repair, so, you know, we're slowly getting there. But I know if it's in front of your houses, it's not quick enough, but in fifty years, it takes a while to get around, I, you know, it's, it, it does.
We've kind of improved our grading, grading apparatus a little.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
So Meyer?
My, uh, yeah, well, that's Granton Aid. Myers Road is with yet another state agency, we're, we're doing that with B-Trans. Uh, that, we were up with the engineers last week, actually. Uh, they're, we're gonna dig three or four test pits on the road this week, well, maybe this week. Although it's good when it's really wet like this to do it. Uh, just see what's underneath and see what kind of French drains or whatever. I mean, at one part, there's very fast-moving water on one side and it really drains a couple up. Uh, I can give you about footage when you come up around the bend. Uh, I can't remember all these people's houses, unfortunately, everybody identifies as...
Oh, one to two of them?
No, 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 no. No, 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 on Myers.
Oh, Myers Road. Yeah, but you gotta place a drainage up there.
Yeah, but, well, we're looking at what's the subsurface problem that's causing some of these issues.
It's all clay up there.
And then, well, we'll find out, and we'll see what the engineers say, and move the water from one side to the other. There's another long stretch where I'm going to have a conversation with some of the property owners about possibly letting us take down a number of trees, because they're pretty convinced. And although I'm not a fan of taking down lots of trees, this particular stretch of road, we were standing there last week, and the sun, and it wasn't, what, eleven o'clock? And the sun was already just about over the trees, and this was going to stay in shade the whole rest of the day. There was still a snowpack on the side of the road, so we'll see what people say. You know, to really be efficient, we would have to move more than the normal amount off the road, so...
Is that classified as a wetland up there?
I can check for you. I don't know. We have lots of little wetland things, so I don't know. If it did, that would throw another issue.
Because I'm thinking that if you could ever get permission to put an excavator out there and drain that wall...
Uh, I don't think that's happening. I don't think that's happening.
Well, probably not, but he's just throwing it out there.
No drainage farms.
Should strike that in the record. But, yeah, so that's... Keep working on that. I know the people up there have been patient for a long time trying to remedy this, but I do like the idea of the engineers coming with us. They're going to take the test pits next week, and let's toss out some new ideas and see if we can actually solve the problem, you know? And the same thing with White Creek Road. Ken, you're familiar with this, because I think they fixed it forty years ago or something?
Yeah, it held forty years.
Part of the road is sinking and cracking away, and...
Yeah, tight block.
I think the only thing to do is to dig it completely up and put in either, like the burrito device we put in down by Brownells, or a stone pillar of French drain that we put in on East Road. But that's going to require the road to be closed, dig the whole thing up, and basically start again. Unfortunately, that's where it was only paved four years ago, but...
Can we get that ground down, that culvert beyond Brownells?
Yes, and we talked to them, and I believe something was done the other day.
Okay.
We're also going to have them cut it out, cut, you know, just cut the pavement, and we're going to go up one day, just dig it out and put it down a little further. Yeah, it's just not deep enough. The guy that had... This is all planned for last fall, and the guy's equipment just kept breaking and breaking.
Okay, good enough.
Yeah. The next thing we had was Glassenberg Road. I'll make this a short story because it's quite a long story, but I was informed by the state that they would not plow upper Glassenberg Road for us anymore.
The state had been doing this?
The state has been doing it. In talking to the district, somewhere back in time, an informal agreement was made between Shaftesbury and the state that for a truckload of sand, they would plow the last quarter, three-quarter mile Glassenberg Road. That's actually in Shaftesbury. There was an event up there this winter where someone's alleging that the state's failure to properly remove snow led to the collapse of his cabin. Now the state's like, "Wait a minute, we're..." They want to have a discussion with us now. They want to continue doing it because they know what a hardship it would be for us to send a truck all the way up there to do that, but it's going to require rebuilding a couple retaining walls, maybe widening the road a little bit, and definitely putting in a turnaround. So that's an unexpected cost that we'll have to absorb, and we're going to be paying for it all winter. Is that... Having a truck having to go all the way up there for a quarter mile would be difficult, but the state is now in a difficult position, too. This has been a claim against them. Whatever that goes is not our concern, but the fact that they want to stop doing it is a concern. So we have to... There's a retaining wall, which I think some of you are familiar with, that needs to be rebuilt and possibly a new one put in. And like I said, the turnaround. They want their truck to turn around.
What do they want to let? They just redo what's there?
We're going up with the... Bob Foley, the district, the Southern Vermont head, the engineers from District One, and another person from further up B-Trans. Everybody wants to have a say in this, and see what they want us to do. I mean, if we want to go there, something will work out, but, you know, we're going to have to be flexible to what they want, and it has to be sizable enough for their truck to comfortably turn around.
Any chance I can go up there with them when they have that many?
I suppose there is. I don't know what it is yet, but I suppose it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder if some of this work would be eligible for a grant?
I don't think we have time for a grant. We have told the snow flies, which, you know, isn't really that far off. And frankly, I'm so backed up on grants now. I, yeah, no, you have to finish a couple of grants that I have to spend in the next few months, but, yeah, I mean, I have grants now, so many grants that have to be done by the end of fiscal nineteen or beginning of fiscal nineteen, that we have quite a... We already have quite a load. They've been very good to us, but they're backing up a little bit now.
Grants are great, but it comes with a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the Upper Shaftesbury Hollow grant, which we have to have the state engineer come down, we have to rock the whole thing, get the final plan approved, then it has to be inspected when it's over, and that's going to be quite a bit of work. We still haven't even heard about the paving grant for East Road yet, because if we get the paving grant for East Road, we have ten culverts to replace on East Road. That's going to take a while. And we haven't heard about the grant to replace the bridge up in Shaftesbury Hollow, which I don't think we're going to get this year, but it wouldn't take much of our time, but it's still going to take time, you know?
That's the one they're going to realize?
Yeah, but the East Road one is... If we get that, that's going to take the first three weeks in July at least to replace the ten culverts across the road up there before they can start paving, so we have a lot on our plate, so maybe next year. All right? I think that's it for roads. Needless to say, they've been out cutting trees all day, so...
Not a very good day for that.
Well, they keep coming.
Well, taking care of the ones down.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Next item would be the... Oops, sorry.
Yeah, can I... Speaking of cutting trees, while we're talking about it, the power company seems to cut down the big old dead trees and just leave them there. Does the town feel any responsibility for removing some of them, or what's the story?
I've talked to Steve to have them removed from some locations.
Like some of his yards?
Yeah, you know, if someone... The idea is to leave the wood behind, because a lot of people will follow around and pick up the wood. But like, a tree was cut up on Tinkham, speaking of Tinkham, because it fell across the road, and big, huge pieces were just left on the lawn. Well, they don't want it. Nobody wants it. I've had people call me and say, "Can you cut that up, and we'll take it?" And it's like, "Well, no." So we're going to go snag that and take that. We'll take some from over on the Parthi Acres that people called about. But ideally, someone would come take this wood, but if they don't, I think it's pretty much our obligation to remove it.
That's what I was afraid of.
You know, and right now, I'm going to have them start piling it in the pit up by the new garage, and at some point, we'll get a burn permit, and we'll just burn it off.
Because some of them are actually, you know, long hedgerows that are almost in the ditches, which is going to start plugging out ditches and all that sort of stuff.
Well, when I drive around, that's been one of the complaints I've had about the tree work, is that, you know, too much gets left behind, and then it's on the side of the road, and then people push it to the side of the road, which is where you want your water to be.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's good to do... We've been talking a lot. I'm going to go around with Jim White, and we have followed the more... The better procedures of marking the trees and telling the homeowners, they... You know, there's actually a whole procedure for this, so we don't have people greatly upset about it.
Yeah, okay.
And some of the trees, I know there's lots of trees in the town right-of-way that are trees now, but, you know, yeah, they would have been great if they were cut down saplings, but they're not now. Some people, you know, it is a right-of-way, and it's polite to ask them before you chop the tree down.
Okay, appointment of fire department officers.
And this is the list from Chief Vatican that he sent to me. These are the officers who were voted in at their organizational meeting. And it just needs the select board to vote to approve that.
Just... We just agree with him? Chief Joe Vatican, that must be, how many years? Twenty-plus, thirty-plus? First Assistant Chief, Mike Taylor, and then Second Assistant Chief, Ed Seewell.
Sure.
Yep, sure. Some move?
Check it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Take care.
That's it, that's all. Thank you. And we have one bid for the roadside mowing, which is from the gentleman who has mowed the last few years.
This is from Hen... Hasley?
Yeah.
David Hasley, who's done it for the last couple of years, how many, several years?
Yeah, actually, this would be his third year, maybe fourth.
Okay. For twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, the first week of June, or the first three weeks of June, and the first three weeks of September, is that the way it works?
Yes.
So two times he's going to go around? Does he make two passes or one pass each time?
It's going to be one pass each time.
One pass each time? Okay.
So in most of the areas, it's just be like what he's been doing. It allows visibility around the corners and things. There are places, and this goes along with all tree thing, where we know we have to cut back more, and that's something that we need to spend more time on.
Okay, and he does have a certificate of liability insurance attached to it, which is, I assume, mandatory?
Yes, and the total is...
Twenty. Twenty, the number at the top is twenty-two thousand five hundred.
So the total, both passes?
That's what it seems. And is that about the same, or is that...
Yeah, that's would be right about where I budgeted it. Actually, somewhat less than what I budgeted, but I should say.
Some moves, some moves?
Check it.
Do you have a first and a second? Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pass four zero zero. Roadside mowing bid we just did.
Did anything ever happen with that mowerhead that I found there for the excavator?
Frankly, we haven't really gotten on to that. There's just too many things at the moment.
I didn't know that.
He's going to get some pushback, but...
Yeah.
And this... We are having, you know, in our weekly meetings, which we just started having group meetings on Friday mornings with the crew, to enhance planning for the following week and recapping what we're doing and trying to get better organized. And we have a lot of organization to do before we move to the new garage. Looking into a lot of new systems and things, but part of cutting before we need to move equipment, we have to know specifically what we're doing.
Yeah.
I mean, the blade up and slashing things apart is quick, I'll give it that. But we have to be kind of realistic about where we are, where we're doing it. And frankly, I've discussed with the crew, the need really to hire out a lot. We are going to hire a contractor to start taking down some of the two-hundred-some trees that still need to come down. And with the projects we have going, anything else, we'll be starting to look for an outside contractor to do, just because we have so many grants. It's taking up, and it's going to take up their time. And you know what? A lot of the problems with the road is just simply making sure the crew has time to do the routine maintenance. I mean, it's the basic maintenance, which is, again, going kind of in a circle back to what I was talking about earlier, somewhat about the amount of vehicle maintenance that's done out here. And although it sounds nice that we work on the vehicles here, I mean, I'm looking at price lists and parts lists and wondering if this is really the most cost-effective way of doing it. Trying to get some metrics on it is a little bit difficult in the way we work here. That's another... I'm looking at another system for overall management here, because there's lots out there. One I like is, it's called TPW of all things, but it allows you to track everything, track work, or it's track inventory. You know, people would be assigned things, how long does it take? You can actually use, you know, GPS systems on vehicles to see how much ditching is done, to how much is this done. So you can really start charting out what it is. How much time is spent doing something? How much time is spent on this brake job? How much time is this? And you know what? A lot of times, if this vehicle went and even sat somewhere for the mechanic, for us to spend, hey, their mechanic, five hours to work on it, and then go get it, would be cheaper than, you know, two guys from the crew working on it over here. And, you know, they're not all mechanics.
They take like more repair. They've got a schedule for each repair they do.
Yeah.
It's a book, a book for how much time it's supposed to take to do that.
And this is...
And that's all they do.
Yeah, and that's the thing. It's... There's a lot of things that we want to look into as we move towards the new garage, and organization, scheduling, and productivity levels. And not saying that, you know, things aren't going on, but there are ways to organize that make things more efficient. And I think we're lacking in that right now.
The only comment I have about it, I don't think for a safety issue, I don't think there's anything more dangerous than a worker with a chainsaw climbing on a stone wall with barbed wire around him and all that sort of stuff, trying to cut down some trees. You know, some people gripe about us slashing the way we did, but on the other hand, it's very dangerous to use a chainsaw.
Yeah, no, I was...
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, I was hoping you didn't see someone doing that.
There's not much any more dangerous than a chainsaw.
That's right.
No, I agree. You know, there's definitely use for doing it with the arm, because there are... You know, I was up at the transfer station looking for something, and all of a sudden, my pants snagged on something because there was barbed wire wrapped around some of the trees that we had cut down. It's like, holy cow! But, yeah, no, there's... It's just trying to broaden it out a little bit, to try and not have people angry when we go up to do things that's not to our benefit. It's a general discussion we're having. But right now, frankly, with the survey we had last year of our trees, we have so many that are completely dead, need to come down. We really don't even have time to look at the smaller ones. We have some issues that need to be done.
Yeah, okay.
And the power company's done a great job so far, but we're going to hire a contractor and mark out a whole bunch more.
Yep, okay. Okay, Town Garage Transfer Station project, how's that coming?
That's coming good. I was going to ask you, did Tim mention the meeting we're having tomorrow to you? Because he's ill, so I don't know if you want to try and be there at two-thirty at MSK Goldstone?
Goldstone?
Yeah, because it was...
Two-thirty?
Two-thirty, yes. It'll be... Craig Jennings from Russell will be there, and we're going to sit down with Goldstone, MSK, and it's kind of the kickoff meeting to get things underway. The contract wording is just about complete. You know, I was speaking with Merrill this morning, just wanted to change one thing. So the contract's done, ready to be signed on our end. Of course, they're having their lawyer look at it on their end, and they have the letter of intent, so they're moving ahead, getting everything organized, and tomorrow's going to be the kickoff meeting, and it's underway. And this building is a little wee bit of a delay for permitting, but we're rectifying that with a little beefy design, with a little thicker form.
Okay, so there will be more to come on that after...
Yeah, you know, at this stage, tomorrow, we'll discuss the general plan, the timing, the scheduling that they want to do. And once it gets started, I was in touch with Dave Newell today to make sure all the insurance policies are going to be issued and all that stuff. Yeah, once we get the plan going, we all agree to the dates, you know, the projected dates and everything.
So we'll have something to bring back to the public after that meeting?
Yeah, it will be this Saturday from ten to noon. I am going to have the garage at...
Well, that's what we should have mentioned there.
Yeah, yeah, the garage and the transfer station, so I forgot about it.
When is this Saturday?
This Saturday from ten to noon. I'll be there. People want to inspect the... We have four generators, two on a trailer, two on pallets, a rusty old speed sign, and that's about it. But if someone's interested in looking at them... that's about it. But if someone's interested in looking at them, I'll have it open from them. Uh, the rules will be, uh, signing a legal form that we take no responsibility for these whatsoever. And we'll take sealed bids on, uh, on the, maybe within a week. Yeah, I'll have to leave a bid here and we'll just open them and whoever bid more than the salvage price, uh, can have them.
Okay.
There's non, renowned air generators, you know, uh, very substantial units and if someone wants them, I guess they can put a bid in on them.
Okay.
Everything else in there is really...
Uh, two, there are two diesels and two gas jobs.
That I don't even know.
Yes.
Oh, I do, okay.
Yeah. Select board goals other than the...
Yeah, Tim wanted to postpone that. Uh, I hadn't, he didn't send me a copy, so I don't know what he had in mind, so, uh, he asked if we could postpone that for this meeting.
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that, that became apparent to me when we had the discussion at the schoolhouse, that the, uh, public really doesn't know a lot of the things that we do behind the scenes and all that sort of stuff. So Perrin Road is a, is a concern to a lot of people and that sort of stuff. So I, uh, I would like to invite somebody from the railroad at a meeting, hopefully the next meeting, and that, uh, we can get their input as to whether a crossover is necessary and that sort of stuff. I'm also very concerned about where Perrin Road comes onto 67 on the Shasbury end of it. You come with that angle. I know the state hates angles like that. They really want a 90-degree and whether there's room to turn everything. So you cross the tracks at 90-degree and go up onto the road at 90 degrees. I don't know, that's...
Yeah, that would, that would be even tight there.
Right.
And I agree too, because the tendency for people going towards Perrin Road is, you know, you can angle right off here before you even have a full visual down.
Well, you've got that turn right there too on 67.
Yeah, so it's, uh, yeah, it would be nice to hear what the railroad has to say. It'd be nice to hear if they had any suggestions for, for alternates. And Perrin Road itself, you know, just, we're doing what we can there. Uh, we tried some things like putting in the T last year, expanding the pavement there. Uh, and again, it's one of those things where, where, you know, the 550 was a, a conservative estimate for paving the length of that without counting sidewalks. I think, so you have 750, $800,000.
Yeah, we understand, so...
Yeah.
I, I just think we should continue to talk about it.
So you had said, is it in the town plan that has the specifics for a road in order to be accepted or is, there's nowhere?
This is, this is the state, oh, oh, to, to accept a private road?
Yeah.
Oh, we have our own policy for accepting the private road. At the meeting, they were talking about changing the classification of the road.
Right.
Well, only the state changes the classification of a road.
I'm just trying to avoid in the future, accepting a road that does not meet the standard. Do we have a standard?
We, we have a standard and I gave Ken a bunch of the material, but the simplest thing to do is what most towns have done now is you simply don't accept a road, period. If you build a road, you've built a private road. The town doesn't take it.
What's that other one? Well, take them, Bill. That private road on the right.
Fox, is it Fox?
Fox Hill.
Oh, 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 oh.
Fox Hill or Fox Hill?
Yeah.
Fox Run, Fox Hill.
Well, building a road is one thing, but it's a private road.
That's a private road.
Right.
Yeah, because there, you know, most towns just, if you're building a development, you build your road. It's a private road. The homeowners association pays to, to take care of it. You don't, you just don't even take them. You just don't even add them to your mileage.
That would be great.
That might be.
And that's just a simple, simple thing. You know, a road properly engineered should be within the state standards, but we don't even have to get involved in that because the policy to tag can simply be, no, we have enough.
Um, yeah, that's fine.
And I, I know we had that with the development in another town, so it's just, no, it's your road and your homeless, homeowners association is gonna have to pay for it.
That might be the easiest way out of it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I agree, absolutely, yeah.
We just don't accept roads.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially when you have 70 few miles already.
Yeah, well, you know.
What's it up to?
72.
Oh, I thought it was 50.
We have 50 gravel roads. Yeah, I mean, and 20 paved roads is enough. 20 miles of paved road is enough to pay for. I mean, cause, uh, you know, we don't even get grants for, for most of them because they're town roads.
Right.
So every penny has to come out of the highway money.
Right.
And, you know, you look at a, a class two road like East Road, which we get money for the whole thing. I'm in my fourth year of trying to get, get three segments done. And there's five segments of the road, so if we don't go anywhere else, it might take me seven years to pave East Road.
Time to do it over again.
Yeah, and you know, you got Buckhill Road that needs, you know, so it's, it's, uh, and you only get one $175,000 grant a year if you get it.
Yeah.
And, you know, they have a whole formula. I've seen it, you know, uh, like when I, I think we had got three in a row and then we didn't get any last year because, you know, it had to go to another town.
Well, the other thing, Perrin Road, I don't think our Perrin Road is up to a state where you could even pave it, make it stand.
No, no.
Well, that's another part where that was kind of being discussed, that there is validity to spending money. I guess like the test holes we're digging over on Myers Road, you know, let's find out what we're trying to fix. Because if you have junk as a base, you're just wasting your time.
You, you gotta have a good base or you put pavement down and next year you're gonna have...
Or you just keep pouring gravel in it every year.
Right, exactly. We'll just keep sucking.
Yeah, yeah.
But they've got, we've got fabric on some of Perrin Road.
Yeah, I think it's the first 1,800 feet or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, it doesn't go that far down really.
But, but when you come around that other corner, as you go down toward...
I'll tell you another thing about paving Perrin Road, uh, because people are talking about walking and everything else, uh, that speed is going to really...
You'll have to park a state trooper down there.
I mean, it'd be the only place I would start considering putting speed tables in to slow people down. That's, uh, I think they'd rather have potholes.
That works though.
What about our next meeting? The 30th is a Monday.
A Monday, that's not a meeting night. Uh, we need to have a meeting. Uh, probably, we could have it Monday or Friday. Uh, it would just be to pay bills, but we are gonna have to schedule one in.
I was gonna ask you that.
Yeah, uh, because it's too far to go, because the next meeting is May 7th.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we may have an appointment or two to make. We've received interest on an appointment to the DRB and interest in appointments to the cemetery commission. So we could, we could add those in possibly to that meeting. Uh, this one was booked for the 30th, so we could probably have a meeting in the clerk's office because it really would just be for bills. And if we do the appointments, that, that would be fine too.
Good, you'll let us know, man?
Yeah.
But there will be something.
Yeah, there will be something. There's gonna have to be something.
All right, yep. Review of action items.
None.
I just gotta be at MSK.
MSK tomorrow, yeah. Yeah.
So it's on me, yep.
Okay, good, because yeah, I'm, I didn't know if Tim had spoken to you, but with him having a fever or something, I don't know. You know, one, one of you should be there.
Anybody else got any business? Joe or anything? I'll say.
Uh, when they, are they gonna have a meeting down there at White Creek to dry that up or what are they gonna do?
Uh, we've already done that.
Oh, it's already been done?
Yeah, so, uh, uh, they're working on a, a plan. The state will, will provide us with what we need to do there, uh, some of what they did at Brownells and just like they're doing from Myers and that. Because what we really want is, you know, the engineers, this is what you can try. I think the proof was after messing around with Brownells, you got the engineer and they sent it to the hydrology stuff in Montpelier and they sent us back that simple burial. They put it in and that was the end of it. So, you know, I'm all in favor of listening to, listening to suggestions and, and saying, and it might have been fine since the 40 years when you put your last French grain in. Maybe it's just plugged in.
Oh, it is. We didn't, we didn't have fabric to put that in.
Just time to do it again.
Just put stone in it.
And that's all, you know, it's...
It lasted 40 years.
Yeah, the stone pillar or the French grain or the burrito, they're all, you know, it's all stone.
Yeah.
I'll put a motion.
I make a motion. Will you adjourn?
Take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.